So I will go ahead and call to order the Tuesday, March 1st, 2022 regular meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. Before we move to citizens' input, first I'll announce that the board had an executive session yesterday, Monday, February 28th. And next, I'll pass the meeting to our interim manager, Centrice Martin, so she can let us know how to best participate in this meeting. Thank you, Centrice, and do a roll call. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the members of the public, staff, and public for joining us this evening for the March 1st regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a virtual meeting conducted using the Zoom telemeeting platform. Additionally, the main meeting room has been made available for members of the public to attend in person. If you are joining the Zoom meeting tonight as a member of the public or as an agent to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please enter your name, or excuse me, please say your name, municipality of residence, and if applicable, the topic to which you'd like to speak on when called on by the chair. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Caldwell?
Here.
Ms. Dinneny?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have a quorum.
Thank you so much, Centrice, and would you like to take a moment to introduce our new staff member at this time?
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. I would like to share with all of you joining us this evening that Nick Byling is with us this evening. He is now our Ferguson Township Communications Coordinator. He joined us just a few weeks ago, and we are so happy to have him. He's been doing excellent work and has just been a great team player in addition to the administration office, and we are so grateful and appreciative of all of your hard work, Nick. Thank you for joining us this evening.
No problem. Happy to be here. Four weeks on the job now, as I previously stated, and, you know, I'm happy to help out here and get to know everybody, hopefully in person soon. But yeah, I'm here, and, you know, if you guys ever need anything circulated or posted or, you know, just want to have a discussion about, you know, community outreach or different things like that, I'm here. You can reach me, and Centrice and I will do our best to accommodate.
Thank you so much, Nick, for joining us, for joining the team, and for being here tonight. Thanks, Centrice, for that introduction. With that, let's go ahead and move into citizens' input. Would anyone care to comment on anything that is not on the agenda? If so, you could state your name, your municipality of residence, and if you can limit yourself to about three to five minutes.
Madam Chair, there's someone here who's attending in person that would like to speak.
Great, thank you. Let's go ahead and acknowledge that person.
Could come here, and I can pull a chair for you?
Thank you so much.
Can you all see me?
Yes, and hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me some time to talk to you. My name is Lawrence Meso, and I live next to Goddard School, so that back of my house faces Blue Course Drive, if you are familiar, right near Westerly Parkway. And the issue I wanted to address to you tonight has been going on for a while and continues to get worse, and that is the amount of cars that are driving at high speeds and making ear-piercing noises, mostly muscle cars and high-revving motorcycles and some pickup trucks. I've lived here for 25 years, and so I could tell you that with the advent of these apartments that are on Whitehall Road at the end of Blue Course Drive and the ones up on Havishaw, I think constitute the biggest part of the cars that come by. What I was wanting to impress upon you is that is the level of noise that it produces is so loud now, and I think it's only if, I think it's only a handful of people that do it, but it's constant in the afternoon, evenings, and even overnight about every day. And the noise is so loud that it makes my house vibrate and the windows vibrate in my house. So if they're going by, you can't hear the TV, you can't really talk, can't listen to music, anything like that. I've talked to several policemen about this over the last year or two, and, you know, it's growing worse, to find out that they say this is one of the leading complaints that they get. It's, and I acknowledge also that it may not be an easy issue to resolve because most of the traffic that goes by, the normal flow of traffic is fine. I don't have any problem with that. But it seems that the individuals that do this delight in making the most noise they can to annoy the biggest amount of people. My neighbors are fed up with it, and I imagine that a lot of people along Blue Course Drive and Bristol Avenue are fed up with it. And also, the noise is so loud that from my house, I can hear it a mile away in either direction, either on Blue Course Drive, on Bristol Avenue, or the other direction on Blue Course Drive. So I'd say that's, I have a background in automotive. I was, I was a mechanic for many years, and I'm very familiar with cars, how fast they're going and stuff. So I'm not exaggerating at all when I say that I'm seeing cars, these handful of cars going by at 75 or 80 miles an hour, passing cars in the turning lane for Westerly Parkway, and they will accelerate and decelerate to maximize the amount of noise they're making, which causes their cars to backfire. I've only noted this, two of the same cars, which one would be a black Ford Mustang, another one is a white Dodge Challenger, and then a handful of motorcycle, high-revving motorcycles that come by at very high speeds also. It's not just that I'm bringing your attention as an annoyance, but I think it's, it's a danger to the public, and I think it's also a public nuisance and disturbance of the peace. And there may be issues, I know, without being able to have radar set up in the area. And the other is that Blue Course Drive is so straight that I'm sure anybody coming down could see if there was a policeman parked or something, which at, at which point I'm sure that they would drive normally so that, you know, they were, they weren't being caught. So that's why I'm bringing to your attention, saying that I understand that if you choose to go forward this, that the solution may be a little more difficult. And if I might make some suggestions, I think that in order to identify who this might be, I think you would have to have a plainclothes person just be present on Blue Course Drive and observe for a while, whether they're there, because as the weather gets warmer, it's going to pick up. It's, as I said, I've been there for many years, and I know how, how it works, to get, you know, to get a bead on who's, who's doing this. And I don't think just increasing resources would help because, again, if there's a police car parked anywhere, they could be seen from afar distance, whether it's marked or unmarked. And part of what I was, you know, some of the suggestions I might have is that we might need to, or perhaps you'd be willing to pass new ordinances with stiff fines for it that would, that would address like reckless endangerment and driving because we're going by the schools there, two schools, disturbing the peace, and anything that's like that. I know that Pennsylvania lacks on having laws that constitute noise from exhaustoms on cars, and the ones that come on these muscle cars are designed to be loud, but the people who are driving them are going, are making them exceedingly loud. So I understand that that might be a problem in getting anything done, but I was hoping that, and also because radar is, I don't think local police have the option of setting a flag. I don't know if state police could get involved or if they want to approach it from a different perspective, like disturbing the peace, you know, endangering, you know, driving dangerously, reckless driving, whatever, whatever that might be, but I.
Have you, have you had an opportunity to connect with our chief over the matter?
No, I don't think I have. I've talked to, yes.
Yeah, I would just suggest maybe you two getting together via Zoom or phone call, something like that, and just touching base because he just, he has a lot of experience and knowledge, and I know you've interacted with maybe other officers, but, you know, maybe talking to the chief, because, you know, we consult him on policy direction. So I would recommend that in particular, and I'm sure he would get back to the board if there's a safety issue going on and thoughts on addressing it.
Okay. And who, what's the police chief's name now?
Yeah, um, and I'm sorry, what was your name? I apologize.
Lawrence Meso.
Thank you, Mr. Meso. It would be Chief Chris Albright, and you can find his contact information on our website.
Okay.
Yep, and I'm sure our staff will also, like, let him know you'll be reaching out. Thanks, Centrice.
Okay. And the other issue, the other issue I'm concerned about is that this may be decreasing the value of homes along Blue Course, because I think if you live there, you would realize quickly how if you went to look at my home, if it were for sale, and these cars came by, think about what your decision would be on whether or not you were going to purchase that home, you know? So that, that is a concern of mine in addition to, to the other things that I mentioned to you. So keep that.
Yeah, definitely. Reach out to Chief Albright if you can connect, and we'll keep the conversation going where appropriate. With that, yep, thank you so much.
Thank you for taking the time and.
Sure, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, good to meet you. Ms. Shirema Young, I see that you have your hand up as well. Did you, did you have a public comment?
I did. I, thank you so much, Chair. I just wanted to add to what the citizen just said. I live along that way, and I have talked to the borough police about it. So I would also suggest to have a joint conversation with Chief Albright and Chief Gardner, because part of that road is policed by the borough. So what they told me was I should probably call at the time when it's going on, and usually it's in the wee hours of the morning where it, it just kind of wakes you up out of bed because it sounds like a blast has gone off. So I think it might require a joint conversation between the borough and Ferguson.
Thank you so much, Shirema. I will take just one moment to add, I have heard a similar sound where I live in West Ferguson. I'm sure it's a different frequency, but yes, there's definitely, you know, some racing, speeding that I have also heard in a different part of the township. And Mr. Steve Miller, is that you I see with your hand up?
Yes, it is.
Hello, welcome.
I just had a quick citizen comment to say hi. That's it.
That's great. I thought maybe, I thought maybe you were going to also talk about the cars.
No, I haven't been there.
I know. I thought maybe you might have heard through the grapevine.
Colorado, New Mexico, Arizona, California, and Nevada definitely exist. So.
Very good. Well, welcome. Lisa, do you have a public comment? Boy, this is getting interesting.
I just wanted to follow up on the comments about the traffic on Blue Course. Some members of the board and past members may recall that, I think it was last fall, I had some communication from the public about concerns of traffic. I think it was closer to Bristol, but in that area, and it may have been closer to the State College portion of the road, too. So I guess I'd just be interested in hearing how that conversation continues, knowing that we'd had some other speeding concerns already voiced in that area. Thanks.
Thanks. I think, I might be wrong about this, but I think at one time, a previous iteration of this board decided not to do a little widening for a paving project because we wanted to actually leave an existing bottleneck to decrease speed. I think it was in that area. I'm not sure, but yes, it's, it's in addition to this particular loud cars kind of racing around, there, that's, there's a, there's a, you know, a corridor issue going on there. It's meant to move cars, and they do indeed move, so, yep. Okay, so we'll be hearing back about that. Through the chief, his report, or the manager's report, I would guess. Okay, great, sounds good. Okay, any more citizen input? Okay, seeing none, let's go to the approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections or changes? All right, seeing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the February 1st and February 15th, 2022 Board of Supervisor Regular Meeting Minutes.
This is Patty. I move that we approve the regular meeting minutes from February 1st and February 15th, 2022.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
This is Tiara. I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any, any opposed? Same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and we'll move on to the authorities, boards, and commission reports. And we have Mr. Ford Stryker with us here this evening with the State College Borough Water Authority Report. Hi, Ford, welcome. Thanks for joining us. Thank you for your report. It was well done. Is there anything you'd like to highlight for us or add?
You know, not really, you know, I was asked to provide a written report, and, you know, it's pretty straightforward. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have about it.
I see none. Thank you so much for making a point to be here, Ford. It's nice to see you.
Yeah, same here.
And thank you for continuing your service there. All right, thank you. Next up are special reports. Tonight, Ms. Centrice Martin will first give us our COVID-19 Local Response Report. Hi, Centrice.
Thank you. So there have been no operational changes in the township since my last update. All meeting restrictions and staff assignments remain as they were reported last Tuesday, or the, the previous Tuesday, February 15th. We do currently, we do not currently have any staff members who are out with COVID-19 or suspicion of COVID-19 exposure. At this time, there are no significant impacts to operations, but should that change, we'll definitely update the board. In Center County, there are 30,881 confirmed COVID-19 cases, in total, 341 deaths. There are 85,944 reported negative cases on the Pennsylvania COVID-19 dashboard. Across the Commonwealth, the number of confirmed positive cases reached 2,287,734 with 43,332 deaths. Second, on vaccinations, in Center County, data shows that 94,173 residents have been fully vaccinated, somewhat from the 94, or excuse me, from the previously reported, which was slightly above 91,000 on February 15th, and another 14,070 have been partially vaccinated. The county's vaccination rate is approximately 60%, having been fully vaccinated, and 69.2% have been, have received at least one dose. Next, as of March 1st, this earlier today, Mount Nittany Medical Center had 20 COVID-19 positive inpatients in their care, ranging in age, ages from 31 to 100. Eleven of the patients that are hospitalized with COVID-19 at Mount Nittany are unvaccinated, and there are no patients with, that are on ventilators. I also want to share with the boards, the CDC released an interactive tool, an interactive map, that's a tool to measure the spread of COVID-19 in communities, I believe sometime last week. As of today, Center County is in the high category. In high category, and the high category requires or is recommending mask-wearing, whereas the moderate category, masks and additional mitigation efforts are recommended only for those that have compromised immune systems. More information will be available on the interactive tool on the Ferguson Township website in the next few days. Nick Byling will be preparing a news release, and if possible, we'll be trying to have that, that interactive map on our website so residents can easily go to our site and populate that, but no promises as of yet. We're working on that. All Ferguson Township residents, we still strongly encourage to sign up and receive COVID-19 vaccination, for COVID-19 vaccination if they have not already done so. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the Board of the Public. Thank you for your patience and understanding as we continue to recover from this unprecedented crisis. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Centrice. Any questions? Tiara?
Yes, I have a question. If we happen to move into that moderate phase as Center County, would that be brought to the board to suggest like whether or not we decide on masking? And the only reason I'm asking is because I've heard in the school board, they're considering it coming up in March if they want to unmask, so I guess I'm just trying to figure out how do we as Ferguson, are we going by, based off other townships or national, like how are we judging our masking?
That's a great question, and it's actually one that we've already mentioned to our leadership team, and we started having discussion just to hear from, you know, those, the department heads and kind of see where staff might fall. And one thing we all agreed on is that while it's still in the high category range that we do still strongly, or we require mask-wearing for staff and those entering the building, we have agreed that we would revisit the conversation once, once we kind of move toward that moderate and low category. So more to come on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right, thanks so much, Centrice, and we'll go ahead and move on. We do not have any Diversity, Equity, and Inclusionary Initiative Report this evening. Likely, we'll be working on kind of building out the structure of that and what will be reported as we move through the strategic planning process and maybe focus on that goal that we're thinking about adding there. So moving on to the Township and Fiscal Responsibility, we've got Jeremy Thompson here this evening, Chair of the Planning Commission, who will be presenting the 2021 State of Planning Report. Welcome, Jeremy, and thank you for being here.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and Madam Vice Chair, and members of the board. I am Jeremy Thompson, the Chair of the Ferguson Township Planning Commission. I'm here tonight to present the State of the Planning Report. Should have received the full report in your agenda. I do have a presentation here that I could show you to just kind of give you a little bit of a summary of this. Should be shown on the screen now. Give me a second here, we'll make some adjustments there. This year, I'm happy to report that our Planning Commission has no vacancies. We welcomed Louis Steinberg in 2021, which gave us a full Planning Commission. We have a very diverse Planning Commission, consisting of various backgrounds and professions from agriculture, education, engineering, law, human resources, you name it. That background and experience helps us to be very collaborative in our planning and review of plans. We do have our planning staff of Jenna, Jeff, and Christina. Also want to give a shout out to Rhonda, our Reporting Secretary. She has received a lot of compliments from our Planning Commission, the way she presents the minutes, so great job, Rhonda, keep up the good work. Some of the things that we do on the Planning Commission, we, in 2021, as always, we make sure we're being compliant with our Pennsylvania Municipals Planning Code requirements. We review land development and subdivision plans. We review the Township zoning and subdivision of land development ordinances, and we also assisted in the implementation of the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan, and we also have been doing some navigation through post-pandemic economy and impacts on land use. A couple of big projects that the plan that were happening in planning last year, we provided feedback to assist in the drafting of our 2022-2026 Capital Improvement Program, and we also reviewed design guidelines and did some visioning for the Terrace Streetscape District that the planning staff will have professional services take a look at a rewrite of that zoning district's ordinance. A few zoning updates, we took part in discussion on updating some zoning in regards to tree preservation protection, including heritage and significant trees. We did some updates to the Terrace Streetscape District Building Height Incentives and Workforce Housing, and we also took part in the updates for the General Commercial Zoning District Regulations to permit self-storage facilities. The zoning department issued 188 zoning permits. They approved 188 zoning permits in 2021, bringing in a little over $9,000 in fees for the township. Dex patios and covered porches was the number one driver in permits, followed by large accessory structures, small accessory structures, and interior renovations tied for third. And then rounding out the top five, there was zoning permits issued for additions as well as new tenant. The Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, uh, took a look at some conditional use uses that took place in township in 2021. The Center Animal Hospital, uh, need to consolidate some lots for a proposed renovations that are coming up. Uh, BTJM Orchard View, uh, constructed a model home out, uh, on their property just down the road from the Sheets, uh, on Whitehall Road. Uh, Penn State University had, uh, conditional use, uh, request to extend, uh, usage of their golf maintenance facility and retail space, uh, on the, uh, West College Avenue. And then we took a, uh, look at a conditional use application for a lot in the Park Hills neighborhood, subdividing the lot to create a flag lot. Some plan reviews that we did, uh, big, probably one of the biggest ones was West College Avenue Student Housing Land Development Plan. Uh, five lots were consolidated on the 900 block of West College Avenue at the Ferguson State College Borough Line. Uh, currently under construction is a six-story multi-use building. Uh, the State College Borough Water Authority, uh, can, uh, submit a plan to construct two small buildings near their existing Coker wellfields to, uh, improve their, uh, equipment for water pumping. And over, uh, at the Orchard Square, just down the road from Sheets again, a lot of activity going on over there. Uh, a plan was submitted to construct a 19,856 square foot commercial retail shopping center that will have three storefronts. A couple of subdivision plans that we took a look at, Ash Avenue, just off West College Avenue, uh, applicant wanted to subdivide a parcel into three lots down in Pine Grove Mills. We had another applicant that wanted to subdivide a parcel into two lots where a, uh, single-family home will be constructed. And then some minor alterations that we took a look at was over on Martin Street, uh, change use of the hap- for the Happy Valley Nutrition IGAR Games. Uh, Sheets on Whitehall Road had some land development, I mean landscaping alterations. Uh, over to Penn State Golf Course, uh, they submitted for minor alterations for the parking lot changes and clubhouse renovations. Uh, Penn State ARL on Research Drive needed a change of use for a helium recovery and the West Cherry Lane Multi-Use Building. Um, over just off Atherton Street, they submitted for some landscaping, parking, and removal of street media and some lighting alterations. Um, with that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thanks, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
Does, does anyone have any questions for Jeremy? I'm not seeing any.
Hi.
All right. If you want to stop your screen share there. Thank you very much, and thanks so much for being here and all the work that you and the Planning Commission have done. I actually have a few questions, but I'm going to follow up offline so I can keep the meeting moving. It's like, oh, you're refreshing my memory on all these things. Thank you so much, Jeremy. Okay.
You're welcome.
Let's go ahead and move on to environment reports. Tonight, we have Doug Ford, um, with the Snetsinger Butterfly Garden. It looks like Pam is there too. Welcome. Hello. Good evening. Uh, and hello. Thank you for being here. And we did receive as a board, um, a report in advance of the meeting. I believe that was your annual report, just phenomenal. And you're here tonight to go ahead and give us a presentation. And I do believe you also have screen sharing capabilities. So.
Yeah, we'll get that started here. Thanks for having us. We haven't, we haven't had a chance to do this ever. So.
It's great.
That's great.
I'm so excited. I already have questions, but I'll hold them till the end.
There we go.
Thank you.
So, um, Pam started out back in 2007 as a master gardener intern working with Bob Snetsinger, and that's how this whole thing really started. I came in a couple of years later, uh, became a master gardener, and together we kind of really, uh, started this whole project, and it just kept growing and growing. And here we are today. So what we're going to do is give you a quick summary of what the project is all about, and, uh, we'll answer any questions you have at the end.
Okay, the development of the Snetsiger Butterfly Garden, and we call it SPG for short because it's easy to get tongue tied if you say it enough time. It was the passion of Dr. Uh, Snetsinger, who was referred to in the community as Butterfly Bob. He first began by developing one acre in 1995, and although Bob passed away a few years ago, master gardeners carry on his mission. And that mission is to educate the public about the importance of butterflies and other pollinators. Many of the master gardeners' first introduction to building pollinator gardens came from working with Dr. Snetsinger, starting in 2007, as Doug said. There were just a handful of us then, maybe five. Now we have over 60 master gardeners involved in the project. And when you see everything that goes on, you'll understand why we need that many people. Everything important that we learned about outreach, we learned from Bob, it's just not reaching minds, but also hearts. And that happens through the joy of discovery. If you've ever been to the garden, you might have seen some of these creatures there. This is an example of some of those discoveries. So when we see an interesting caterpillar or an insect nectar on a flower, it taps into that childlike wonder, and that's the beginning of wanting to learn more, followed by wanting to create habitat in our own backyards, finding ways to conserve these beautiful creatures. Bob gave me a milkweed plant in 2008 and told me to take it home. I soon found several monarch caterpillars, and I was hooked, and the rest is history.
So over time, it's been 15 years with the Master Gardener Partnership, uh, out there. Uh, the reach of the SPG has expanded a great deal. Uh, our mission, uh, that we have on our website states that, uh, the Central Butterfly Garden is to inspire the development and conservation of pollinator habitats through demonstration gardens, education, consulting, and outreach programs. Penn State Extension Master Gardeners of the SPG work to educate the public about the importance of pollinators and their habitat needs as critical components of many ecosystems. So when looking at this diagram, you can quickly see that all there are two main activity areas, education and outreach and demonstration gardens. There's considerable overlap. One doesn't happen without the other, and our outreach is directly tied to our demonstration gardens, which is at the very core of the project. So now the SPG is up to, is now a three-acre habitat after that first, first acre that Bob worked on. And it's also an educational site, and not just a park, but it's an educational site, richly layered with a diverse habitat. There are over 40 resident species of butterflies, and its gardens are enriched with hundreds of species of native plants, shrubs, trees, that serve as the food and shelter for these, um, pollinators in every season. The major stock of the gardens are native plants, the foundation for a complex ecosystem. So along the outside edge of the habitat lies our eight demonstration gardens. The primary purpose of the demo gardens is to show how you can create an inviting space for pollinators and birds in your own backyard, no matter what the conditions. So nature is not compartmentalized like this, but it gives us the opportunity to illustrate what kind of plantings and design elements can be chosen to support specific wildlife populations.
So I'm going to do a quick review of the demonstration gardens. If, for those of you who haven't been there or have walked by it, um, each demonstration garden has a purpose. So the woodland habitat that's on the corner, that's the first one, is a demonstration area that consists of several species of native plants, uh, trees, shrubs, perennials, and bulbs, selected as a source of reliable spring foliage and shelter for native and domestic bees. The Discovery Garden, this was our first one, is a major teaching garden, providing information on pollinator-friendly practices and gives the public ideas on how to create pollinator habitat in their backyards, mona- or front yards.
Yep.
Their landscape. Monarch Way Stations, sponsored by Monarch Watch at the University of Kansas, are places that provide milkweed and nectar sources necessary for monarchs to produce successive generations and sustain their migration. The backyard bird habitat showcases plants and features for sort supporting bird life in the home landscape. A lot of people don't know this, but 75% of butterfly host plants are trees and shrubs. That's the plant the caterpillars eat. That's why the butterfly garden has so many trees and shrubs. Adding native shrubs to the landscape is one of the best ways to increase populations of butterflies, birds, and other wildlife. The brush fence is a popular addition to the demo gardens. We also have a native bee conservation, uh, demonstration garden. Plantings in this area have been specifically chosen to be most beneficial to our native bees by providing essential pollen and nectar sources as well as habitat. The focal point of the space is a bee hotel, uh, built as an Eagle Scout project. It incorporates a large variety of nesting materials for native bees, beneficial insects, and butterflies. The Pollinator Preferences Study is a statewide master gardener study, uh, and we survey and identify the attractiveness of goldenrod and joe pie to butterfly populations. This multi-year study will identify some of the best plants to include the garden for supporting butterflies. And this is just one research study that takes place in this butterfly garden. We, there, the university has done studies out here. Graduate students have done studies there. So it's very valuable.
So this gives you an idea. Typical day of working at the SPG can include planting, laying paths, collecting seed, editing, we don't call it weeding anymore. As the most visited park in Center County, working in the gardens provides a lot of opportunities for outreach. On any given day, while we're working, and we have about an average of anywhere from 15 to 20 people who stop by, and we start getting into a conversation about pollinators and their habitat needs.
As a demonstration garden, the SPG provides opportunities for pollinator education through formal garden tours, casual interactions, habitat chats, ma- master gardener state and local trainings, and events. In September, the producers of Weather World featured a segment on monarch migration that was filmed in the garden. Master gardeners demonstrated monarch tagging and educated viewers on how to create habitat for monarchs. The SPG also participates in the Monarch Watch Tagging Program. Every September, we demonstrate monarch tagging and give talks on monarch migration and creating habitat to support monarch populations. And this activity, uh, never fails to the light, all ages.
So guess what? Wings in the Park is back. It's been five years since our last Wings in the Park celebration. Uh, we had Wings in the Park for a lot of years, um, but for, um, the, this was really our premier outreach, uh, effort, uh, at the Snetsiger Butterfly Garden. And because of its popularity, along with being free, the word spread over the years, and attendance grew each year. The last year we had Wings in the Park, almost 1,000 people attended. So COVID came along, and we had to stop doing it, but now it's back. And the SPG is known for developing creative programming for all ages, and we received a Master Gardener National Award, uh, for our innovation programming a couple of years ago. At Wings in the Park, master gardeners provide a lot of different kinds of activities that are interactive, educational, and fun. But the success of most of our programs, including Wings in the Park, is because of the park community partnerships that we did, uh, we have developed. So this next slide gives you an idea. This is a group that we have commitments from for this coming summer's Wings in the Park. Uh, and we still have probably about six or seven that are looking at their calendars and trying to figure out if they have anybody available in the summer to come and join us. So we're looking for a really great event.
The largest SPG outreach activity is connected, we call it our satellite garden program. I don't know if you've heard of this, but it is pretty big. The power of outreach is multiplied by teaching stewards, and that means anywhere from children in schools to church communities, to, to many, many organizations, the how and why to plan, plant, and tend their own pollinator garden. Master gardeners work with, um, many neighborhood groups, um, besides schools. And they create these habitats in their own background, uh, backyard. This is a school landscape right over at, uh, Radio Park, Radio Park School. Uh, so the master gardeners provide design and plant selection guidance. Most of the plant material is grown from seed, or we use the SPG as a nursery, and we dig divisions and take them into the school landscape. Master gardener captains serve as mentors for our, we have close to 40 satellite gardens that are scattered throughout the center region. In some state parks, they're, they're all over the place. Retirement communities. This is our most, uh, recent installation, Park Forest Middle School. Uh, we laid the groundwork for this new garden two weeks before Christmas.
No snow on the ground.
Yeah. So these new garden sites become living classrooms and partners in the mission of the Snetsiger Butterfly Garden. In this photo, students at Belfont Middle School are making observation of insect interactions between plants in the mint family and aster family. So they're doing data collection right there. We provide instruction in gardening practices. We do workshops, presentations, and field day activities when possible in-person activities were included as tie-ins such as monarch tagging or, um, garden planning sessions. Most recently, we conducted a winter sowing workshop of native seed with Radio Park Elementary. When in-person programs shut down a few years ago, we scrambled. So what can we do? But it turned out this was an amazing opportunity. We developed a series, series of virtual field trips to students from school, schools in the Snets, uh, Satellite Garden Program. So we already had this relationship with all these schools. Uh, and we also taught the State College Area Virtual Academy. We do every student in the virtual academy. These live interactive Zoom presentations include slides, animation, videos, and question and answer sessions. The series of six programs focused on life in the pollinator habitat throughout all the season. Our current presentation that we are wrapping up is about the winter habitat. Uh, it's called, Are You Sleeping? So currently, um, we have done over 80 presentations, and we've given them to, um, we're, we're getting close to 3,000 students in nine elementary schools. We can provide these to students at home, in the classroom, and at some point, we'll probably go in person again. Um, the students are so engaged and enthusiastic. The teachers have been very supportive, and our list of schools keeps growing. So necessity truly was the mother of an invention. Just to give you something we did over Thanksgiving, we did, uh, we created a Thanksgiving placemat, uh, that showed what everyone, the association of what we eat for Thanksgiving and the pollinators that made that possible. Uh, students printed out the placemat, they colored it, and then families learned about the connection between their Thanksgiving feast and pollinators right there. So here are my grandchildren and Doug's dad, uh, holding the placemat.
So part of what we are, uh, we aren't just doing our educational program right here at home. Uh, through our Facebook page and our website, we are reaching people across the globe, actually. Uh, our Facebook page is very active with a very wide reach with educational posts and feature that feature native plants and pollinators appearing regularly throughout the year. The page's reach, uh, increased to date to about 850 followers with over 10,000 engagements. So our website has visitors from all over the world. They're interested in the kinds of work that we're doing, the kind of educational program we're doing, as well as our directories. We have a plant directory, butterfly directory, and bird directory. We're in the process of developing a native bee directory as well. Hope to have that up sometime this year. We also have created these garden design plans that people can go and look at that, and I give them a good sense of how to go about designing them, and also the different kinds of plant material, uh, that are, are appropriate for those particular, uh, plans. We also have, uh, developed a number of educational displays, supplementary materials, and habitat signage. Oftentimes, if you actually physically go out to the Butterfly Garden, you will see some of these big educational displays in the kiosks out there. Oftentimes, if you actually physically go out to the butterfly garden, you will see some of these big educational displays in the kiosks out there. This is an example of a sign developed for a native bee conservation garden. And we have little signs out there by all of our plants that you can scan and it'll bring you right to our website where you can learn a lot more about, about what's in the garden. So fifteen years ago, park visitors would pass by, oftentimes not even noticing or understanding the purpose of the butterfly garden. But today, the SPG is a destination site, a place where nature enthusiasts of all ages come to explore the natural world. It plays an important role in encouraging, encouraging all of us to turn our own landscapes into vibrant, life-sustaining habitats that directly impact our own health and the health of our planet. That's our presentation. With that, we'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Doug and Pam. Great presentation. I see you have some applause from some folks in the, in the gallery there. And Patty, it looks like you have your hand up with a question.
Um, yeah, no, it's not really a question. It's just more of a comment. I wanted to say thank you so much. Actually, this presentation just made me happy and smile. So thank you. It was amazing.
We wanted to do, it, it's hard to bring you to the garden, but we have, one of our master gardeners is a wonderful photographer. So she creates, she, she did all, most of those photographs.
Gorgeous, gorgeous. Tiara.
Yeah, I just wanted to also kind of echo what Patty said. I don't really have necessarily like a question, but I do want to say I really liked the presentation. I didn't know about this, so I'll be bringing my son by. Maybe I'll even do a party or some sort. And the only, the only, the only thing I want to like put in the ethers is that mat that you made, that the, I think it was a Thanksgiving mat. I really like that. We're vegetarians, so maybe you can make a special one for us when we come through. And that's all I wanted to say, but that, it was great.
Well, I drew that and I even thought it would be a good idea to, because we have a few family members that are vegetarians. And I thought we need to have another option.
One of the things I did want to mention, I mean, we, you know, this, there's obviously a lot of master gardeners involved in this project. But we created a, a special organization for community members who are not master gardeners who want to come and be a part of all of this called the Hive. And so we are, we have a nice mailing list that we've, we've developed of just people in the community who want to be a part of this project. So you don't have to be a master gardener to be a part of this project.
We will train.
Yep.
Fighting. And Dave Modricar, I see your hands up.
I, yeah, I just wanted to say that it made me smile too. So, since Tris might not believe that, but I was, I was smiling and.
We believe you smile, Dave.
And I wanted to say to Pam and Doug Ford, maybe it's too late this year, but you know, maybe future years, we could look to you as a partner for Arbor Day. I think maybe you've done that in the past and.
Yes, we have.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we are going to celebrate Arbor Day this year at Tudor Park and the Tree Commission had some ideas last night. If it's not too late and there's any way to partner with you, I'd love to be able to reach out.
Well, as a matter of fact, we are, we decided the focus for Wings in the Park this year was going to be trees and shrubs. We feel that they're overlooked too much for habitat. So instead of give, and we always give a plant away at Wings in the Park, so and get, instead of giving away a herbaceous perennial, we ordered several hundred seedlings of red oak, red oak and nine bark. So we're going to be giving those away at Wings in the Park and on Earth Day. So we could do something for, we have a lot of trees.
I did send an email to Scott Blum Blum and I forget who the other person was now that I sent it to. And actually asking if, if the Tree Commission would be willing to join us, want to wings at the park. Because what we want to do, we've never used the, the Tudor Arboretum for Wings in the Park. And we really want to use that this time around. And it'd be great if the Tree Commission might have somebody there to, you know, to talk to people about, you know, native trees and that sort of thing. And when we do these giveaways, because it, you know, on Earth, the Earth Day weekend, we're, we ordered a hundred and fifty red oaks and a hundred and fifty nine bark, and we're giving all these babies away. And so, you know, it's one thing to just give them away, but we have to give them instructions about how to plant them and take care of them. But we also want to make sure that we're giving information about the importance of trees and shrubs. So we really would love to team up with the Tree Commission and you, and utilizing the garden, you know, to really educate people more about that.
That's great. Let's see what kind of synergy we can get going there. I know that they have a, you know, a goal of doing outreach and education. So let's certainly see what develops. I, I'm excited about all the enthusiasm that this presentation brought. It's really long, long overdue, and I'm so happy that you could be here and share with us. And I hope we can make this an annual thing so that we can stay connected, you know, with everything that you're doing and, you know, partner. Lisa, I see your hand is up.
Thanks. That was one thing I was going to say was I hope we can get an update on this presentation. It was just fantastic. And to have this at Tudor Park is just awesome. It's just, you know, such a, such a great valuable asset in Ferguson Township. So thanks so much for putting together that great presentation and coming and sharing that with us. I wanted to ask, you noted the Belfont School, and I was just curious if you're involved with any other schools outside of the State College School District?
Yes. As a matter of fact, we are. Phillipsburg, Bald Eagle. We've worked with Bald Eagle High School for several years now. The, the school board actually, because of our involvement there, the school board put a month, several thousand dollars in the budget just to put native plants in the landscape. Because we work with the high school students and they won an award in Harrisburg for designing pollinator gardens. So they are our, our largest high school association. We also have St. Joe's Academy and, and well, that's State College, but it's not the State College School. As we go up as, and we do state parks, so we have one in Parker Dam State Park. Down in Huntington, the, what's the name of the retirement community?
Jay, I forget now.
See, there's so many I can't really think.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that people love and don't know about what we do and is one of my, my passions is, is helping to develop therapeutic landscapes. So I was on the, one of the leadership team folks who helped put together the Mountain and Healing Garden Project. And we have a, we have a pollinator garden there that is one of our satellite gardens. Unfortunately, there looks like we're going to have to move the healing garden because they're going to build a very large, another building up there sometime in the near future. So we're already in the planning stage for where that's going to get moved. But recently, we've been, you know, contacted by an, an organization that deals with the autism spectrum from kids on up to adults that want to install a Serenity Garden. And one of the demonstration gardens we do have at the SPG is called Serenity Space. And it was developed for the sole purpose of giving people an opportunity to experience nature and the healing aspects of nature and designed specifically to give people that kind of an opportunity out at the Snetsiger Butterfly Garden. So, so developing therapeutic landscapes is an important part of all of this as well, even though the primary focus is on our pollinator friends.
That's fantastic. What a reach.
Yeah, I'm just floored by this presentation and everything you're doing. And I really want us to do some follow-up and connect you with the folks that are doing our open space planning too and get some of this language in there. This is really great, you know, yeah.
Lisa. That was the last thing I was going to say was if we could share this presentation with our ABCs. I know Jeremy is here from the Planning Commission. I think it'd be so valuable for them to see what kind of work is going on at one of our parks. And, you know, just the detail that you incorporated in there, I think they'd all really find interesting.
And we would be happy to provide a tour for all of you. We, we give a lot of tours. Tour groups come up from Harrisburg, from different place, from different parts of the state. But we would be happy to give you your own private tour.
The last thing I'll mention is that I met with the Tudor Trust back in the fall. And they are interested in, I'm not sure if it necessarily would be an expansion of the Snetsiger Butterfly Garden. But we have that big field on the other side of the, you know, walkway there. And so I'm, before David left, he wanted to let me know that there was interest in moving forward with developing some of that space into some kind of a more prairie-focused native habitat. And so I'm, I guess I'm going to be getting in touch with Dan Jones and, and Santris. I guess you were going to maybe help facilitate that. But, but again, there's a lot of land there to do some really nice, interesting things and provide another opportunity for a site that we can use for educational purposes.
Thank you so much, Doug, Pam. I cannot thank you enough on behalf of the township. Also, I, there's about fifty things, maybe not fifty, all right, maybe four or five things that I really want to like really follow up with. Like the Satellite Garden, maybe getting a map, links from our website, you know, let's try to build some bridges here and promote your efforts as a township. It's really something for us to be proud of. And so, yeah, thank you so very much.
I just want to say that, you know, the partners that we have in this, you know, you guys, the Center Region Park and Rec, the Tudor Trust, you know, this is, this has been a great, great community partnership for sure.
And the one thing I want to end with is the Snetsiger Butterfly Garden has written a musical. Hillary, this is for you.
Pollinators, the Musical.
Pollinators, the Musical. It was written by one of our master gardeners is a musician. I did the set, of course, and it always comes back to theater. So.
I'm building a puppet theater. I've never built a puppet theater before.
So it's premiering at the Penn State Arboretum in June eighteenth. And then it will come to Wings in the Park for Wings in the Park. And it's, it's a big deal. So.
That's so exciting.
Puppets. It's a puppet musical.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't think you could get the actual pollinators to cooperate very well.
Oh, yeah. Well, instead of master the house, the, the drone bee sings Master of the Hive.
Interesting, interesting, interesting. And also maybe a tour on our, we're, we're going to try to have our, I think it's official that we're going to have our ABC recognition, our Boards and Commissions Recognition Event at Tudor Park. So maybe we could even arrange a tour of our ABCs at that. So, okay, so, all right, we'll, we'll move on. There's plenty else that we have to talk about. But thank you so much for being here and all that you do.
Great to see you.
All right.
Bye-bye.
And you as well. All right, okay. Let's go ahead and move on. That was great. But let's move on to the Cog and Regional Committee Reports. We have Executive Committee. I attended that meeting. The report is in the agenda. I really don't have anything to add. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, Lisa, then you're up with anything you would like to highlight from the CCMPO meeting?
Just a couple of things. The agenda is really extensive and includes everything you probably need to get from that meeting as well as the PowerPoint that was linked to, or maybe it was attached, I forget, to an update on the State College Area Connector. So I recommend walking through that. It gave a lot of updated information on the project. And what, so just a couple of things on that. One thing I would note is there is going to be an open house on April fifth at Calvary Church at Harvest Fields. It's from three to eight on the State College Area Connector. If you attended the one that was held at, I think it was at the Elks Club. I went. I'm trying to remember where it was. I think it was at the Elks Club. It'll be similar to that. I'm not sure if it'll be quite as large, but it's a public input session. And there's one as well. I think it's in Center Hall. I didn't write that one down, but it's in the, it's in the packet. So, you know, I'd encourage anyone who's interested to attend that. The other thing I wanted to note is on the safety targets, it's really complicated. And so I won't even try to get into it. It's all in the packet. So you can read all of that. And there's not, there's not too much to say on the targets themselves. One issue though, is that the targets are data-driven. And so we, the CCMPO then bases their projects that are on the tip and on the long-range transportation plan on safety improvement projects that are identified based on data. So it really excludes a lot of, you know, community concerns, anecdotal data and things that we hear. There was somebody at the meeting who said, you know, they want to get a study on a traffic light because they're just seeing a lot of increased pedestrian traffic and they have concerns. And it just sounded a lot like a lot of situations we've had that other Center Region municipalities have had. And so, you know, CCMPO doesn't have the manpower to take on those targets per se. But I'm thinking we may want to discuss looking at warrants and, you know, how warrants are met and decided by PennDOT. It's an issue we just had come up at Cherry Lane. So, you know, I'll keep thinking about that, but it's, you know, something, if you read through the packet, you can kind of get an understanding of, you know, the limitations that are put on us, even with our local roads by having to meet the criteria of PennDOT for signs and signals. So, you know, just something to think about that, you know, we could probably bring as an agenda item or for discussion to the chair. You know, maybe this summer sometime. So something to think about.
Thanks, Lisa. I have one question. Does anybody else have any questions for Lisa? Okay, thanks for highlighting that. My question, you, you may not be able to answer it. And thank you for dealing with CCMPO and the complicated funding. But thank you. In your meeting notes, it talked about how our Y intersection, Y intersection is being fully funded by the, I'm going to say it wrong, tip, tiff, tip, tip?
Yeah, it's on, right, it's on the tip and it's funded.
Right? So that's, it's, it's a pass-through and we're getting that money. But as I recollect, we were not, they were not going to put in the pedestrian upgrades. PennDOT wasn't going to put them in unless we paid for them separately. Does that mean that the tip then covers it for us? Or that comes out of our budget and then it's redistributed to other people? And they're like, yay, it frees up money. But really, it's like, yay, Ferguson Township is paying extra money. Is that, am I understanding that incorrectly? I see Dave Modricar has appeared. Maybe he wants to answer that or Lisa. I don't, I don't care.
I have an answer. I'll let Dave go.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're looking at the, they're looking at the township to fund, I think it's about twenty-six thousand dollars worth of the pedestrian improvements. Yeah.
So when you say they, it's not PennDOT though, it's the county participants in CCMPO, really?
Well, the, the money flows through PennDOT to the.
Yeah.
In the, in, it's really state money.
I see. So that's not money that's being redistributed to anybody here. It's being redistributed to somebody else in the state.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-six thousand they don't have to spend on the project. Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay, thank, thank you.
Well, and I don't know, Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I'm not sure if they were ever in there because I think they didn't meet the warrant.
The pedestrian?
Yeah. So I'm not sure if they were ever budgeted for and taken out.
Yeah, they did have the improvements in the original design. Ron Everett reviewed it, our township engineer, and, and made comments to make the improvements even more compliant and better, at which point the state said, well, boy, if you're going to make us do that, we're just, maybe we're not going to put pedestrian improvements in. So then they, a study to show that we didn't even have the walking movements there to warrant it, which is ridiculous in my opinion, but nonetheless was the basis for them to say, now if you want us to put it in, you have to pay for it. And that's probably how it ended up.
Good times with PennDOT. Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. And thank you for clarifying that. It's always a depressing topic. I don't know what to say. Okay, so moving on to staff reports. We've got the managers' reports and Tris, is there anything that you wanted to highlight?
Uh, no, not at all.
Uh, no, not at this time. Everything is provided written in the report. I'll take it.
Great. Any questions for Centris or any of the other staff reports? Okay, Lisa?
All right, I'm moving my screen here. Just one question for Dave Modrick on the the neighborhood meetings, the Zoom meetings for construction. There was one for Harold Drive and one for, I think it was White Hall, Marengo, I forget what those were for. Are, is there a link to that Zoom somewhere or?
There is. I can send it to you. I sent it to Centris earlier today. When we send those notices out for open houses, we have historically and typically send them just to the adjoining property owners. Those are the ones we invite. So we don't post it on the website and invite the entire township. However, if you'd like to change that, let us know. And in the meantime, I did send that link to the manager.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
I'll send that out this evening. I got it right before, I got it earlier and I, I figured rather than just send it to the one board member, I'll send it to the entire board. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks all. Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. And we have authorization to proceed with procuring ornamental streetlight for Pine Grove Mills Streetlight Improvement Project. This will be introduced by Mr. Dave Modrick. Thanks, Dave.
Yes, there is a very succinct narrative in your report. I'll skip right to the bottom line and say that the recommended motion is that the Board of Supervisors authorize staff to proceed with the design of Contract 2019 C21, the Pine Grove Mills Streetlight Improvement Project to include replacement, and this is the key, to include replacement of 25 existing high pressure sodium fixtures with the 2,700 K LED ornamental streetlight fixtures.
All right, well, Dave Modrick really just read our, our motion that's in the agenda. So I will go ahead and take, you know, motion to move that motion from a board member.
This is Patty. I, the, I move that we accept the motion as read by Dave Modrick.
Great. And do we have a second?
This is Hillary. I second.
Fantastic. Any questions or comments, thoughts, discussion on the motion? Looks like there's none, Dave. So it looks like we are ready to move forward with this project. That's exciting. I'll go ahead and call, oh, Patty.
Sorry. I just wanted to, do you get a lot of people that came in and commented on the brightness of the light?
Uh, we got a handful, probably less than a dozen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just curious.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I wasn't sure how many to expect either.
That's a decent, that's a decent amount, but it was really instructive. I really appreciate y'all setting that up.
For those that came to see it, I mean, it, it's, it's telling. So.
Yep. Yeah. All right. Go ahead.
That was illuminating.
Very good.
That was such a bad joke. But it made me laugh.
Okay, looks like we're ready for a vote. And this will just be a voice vote. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously and we are on to new business. First up is the consent agenda, consent agenda. I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda and accept the voucher report.
This Patty, uh, move that we accept the consent agenda and the voucher report.
Do I have a second?
This is Tiara. I'll second that.
You, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And next up is the CNET Board Member Vacancy. This will be introduced by Ms. Centris Martin. Centris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So provided in the agenda packet is a narrative. I'll just cover briefly the main points. We had a, the township received the resignation of Mr. Thomas Giles as the CNET Board Representative for Ferguson Township. And he had many great things to say on, during his term. And he says, thank you for the opportunity. The letter is attached for the board. Moving forward, however, the, the CNET Board meets quarterly and the next meeting is scheduled in April. And then this, the following meeting after that, I believe, is scheduled for July. And provided with the agenda is a copy of the board's policy on authorities, boards and commission appointments. The board tonight is being asked to discuss filling the vacancy, understanding that as part of the policy, there's a, a series of steps now that staff to, you know, puts into place to, to really try to maximize this, an increased number of volunteers to serve in any one of the ABCs. And so what that looks like really is, is if the board discusses this vacancy and decides that you would like to direct staff to open the application period, we would, at some point in time, given that there are many different meetings being scheduled in addition to the regular meeting, we would look at schedules and try and determine a good point in which we would open the application, meaning we would advertise on CNET, we would put an advertisement in the local paper, and we would promote on social media as well as do a few e-news stories and promote as well as in the e-newsletter. Trying just to raise awareness about this opportunity, get more folks involved. After we received, hopefully, a number of applications within a 30 day period of the application period open, that then we would schedule interviews. And so the board would meet with each individual applicant and take time to discuss and determine who they would like to appoint at the next regular meeting to serve on the CNET Board. Again, this is not a difficult process, but just that the board has so many different meetings that are being coordinated right now. We understand that this process might take some time. So really tonight, the board's asked to discuss filling the vacancy. If you would like to, there are several different options, understanding that staff is managing with some time constraints and competing resources right now, we certainly would consider serving and attending at a temporary basis, the upcoming one to two meetings. If the board did not want to appoint someone on the board to, to attend these meetings temporarily. So there are a couple of different options. Really, I just wanted to share with you the process. And we'll do what the board directs us to do after the discussion. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Centris. So, so really, maybe we, we really want to make sure that we do some recruitment, so we don't want to rush things. We have a lot on our plate right now. If anybody wanting to volunteer to kind of fill in for a meeting or two, any board member, that would be most welcome. And as you heard Centris say, if we, you know, if we're unable to bridge that gap, there would be staff that would be willing to do that. I see Patty's hand has, has gone up. Patty?
Um, yeah, I just have a question. So when exactly do they meet? Do they meet during the day or do they meet in the evening?
That's a great question. So they, they meet at 7:30 on the second Tuesday of each quarter. And those specific dates, I believe, would be 7:30 on April 12th. And I just, I just looked this up and I believe it's July, but I'll get back to you within a few moments to confirm that third quarterly meeting in July.
So that would be an evening meeting, not 7:30 AM, 7:30 PM meeting.
So that could, that's the same time as our board meeting though. The second Tuesday?
The second.
First, oh, no, we're the first, we're the first Tuesday.
Okay, first and third. Okay. Our second Tuesday is a daytime meeting, work session, correct?
Right. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Any volunteers? Anyone interested in filling in? Lisa, I see your hand is up.
Well, I could do the April one, but probably not the July one.
Great, great. So, um, I don't know about, go ahead, Centris.
I just want to chime in. It's 7:30 PM on Tuesday, July 12th.
July 12th. So Patty, you said you might be able to take that one?
Yeah.
Okay, so it looks like we have a bridge. So it looks like Lisa will take the April meeting and Patty or I as a backup or Centris as a backup to me will take the July meeting. And then in the meantime, we'll work out advertising and we'll buy ourselves a little time to get that done. And then schedule an interview down the, down the road a wee bit.
And, and where is the meeting held?
I will provide all of that in a, in an email. The meeting scheduled for April is confirmed for Zoom. The meeting scheduled for July is yet to be determined in terms of Zoom, hybrid and/or in person.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, looks like we don't need any official motion there. We've worked out our details. We're all clear on that and we can go ahead and move on. Thank you both for volun, everybody for volunteering who has volunteered. And we'll go ahead and move on to authorization to submit variance application for Park Hills Drainage Way Project, also introduced by Dave Modrick, our Director of Public Works. Welcome back.
Hills, thank you. The Park Hills Drainage Improvement Project is, you know, well underway in design. And the zoning officer has reminded us that any work in a floodplain requires a variance. So again, there's a narrative in the packet. Just a reminder that all necessary permits for the project will be acquired, followed, including the Department of Environmental Protection, the Army Corps of Engineers, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And the, excuse me. There are a number of properties that are affected by this project. And while for the most part, the limits of the floodplain are lessened on their property. Nonetheless, the, the floodplain is still remaining on their property. In some places, there are slight adjustments. There's a separate process we're going through to acquire the necessary easements, the permanent drainage easements. But since some of the work is on those properties, we've asked those property owners to support the township in the effort to obtain variance. Five of the seven property owners have consented to date. For those that don't consent, as I mentioned, the acquisition of the easement process would provide us the authority to move forward. So the recommended motion tonight is that the board authorize the acting township manager to submit a variance application to the zoning hearing board to perform the work within the floodplain on the lands owned by the township and on private property where permission has been granted.
Thank you so much, Dave. Dave has just read our motion. So I would accept a motion to move that motion that Dave has just read for us.
This is Patty. I move that we approve the motion that Dave Modrick just read.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
This is Hillary. I second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, this will also be a voice vote. So all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Dave, for all your work on leading this project.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and next up, we've got proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to officially recognize Women's History Month of 2022, introduced by Ms. Centris Martin, interim Township Manager. Centris.
I started talking and I was muted. My apologies. Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda packet includes a narrative that, that I'll just kind of, I'll read quickly. Ferguson Township recognizes the importance of celebrating the contributions women have made in the United States, as well as the achievements women have made over the course of American history in a variety of fields. The Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors also fully embraces and enjoys its historic first all-female board as of 2002. Making the first time in the township's 220-year history, this occurrence has taken place. Women's History's Month, excuse me, Women's History Month has its origins as a national celebration in 1981 when Congress passed Public Law 97-28, which authorized and requested the president to proclaim the week beginning March 7, 1982, as Women's History Week. The Board of Supervisors is asked to consider the proclamation provided with the agenda. I'm also happy to share with all of you that our new township coordinator, Nick Beileen, drafted this proclamation. So I would like to say thank you, Nick. Well-written. I'm happy to read it if you'd like, Chair. Otherwise, it is provided with you all in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Centris. And thank you very much, Nick. Thank you for that effort. It's a lovely proclamation. I, I would be happy if you read it. On the other hand, there's, there's no need to. I know it can, you know, it can get kind of long when you're the one reading the proclamation. So I, I would offer it up if any board member would care to read that proclamation. We're to the, our end of our agenda and you know, we don't have a lot more. So would anyone care to, to read that? If not, it's Hillary, I saw you make, no, okay. I'm always looking for that mute button to be, and Tiara, did you unmute for?
I was gonna tell Hillary, go ahead, if she was really gonna read it. She's. I'm happy to. It's not a problem. Yeah, why don't you, please? I think somebody should read it.
All right. A proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to officially recognize Women's History Month of 2022. Whereas Women's History Month is an annual celebration of the history and accomplishments of women across the world and also an acknowledgement of their courage and struggle to retain the same basic human rights as men that still proceeds to this day. And whereas Women's History Month was first formally declared in the United States in March of 1987 through a resolution passed by the United States Congress as a result of a petitioning effort through the National Women's History Project and stems from its early iterations as Women's History Week and Women's History Day, which is still annually held on March 8. And whereas the accomplishments of women in the United States began far before the annual celebration of Women's History Month, as American women of all races and ethnicities have advanced society in the realms of abolition, voting rights, labor rights, civil rights, and have valiantly given their lives in honor of protecting these profound rights they fought so hard to achieve. And whereas the specific theme of Women's History Month of 2022 is women providing healing, promoting hope. In order to out, in order to honor the countless women, frontline healthcare workers, medical doctors, and those who have helped make strides in the fields of mental and physical health as we climb out of the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Ferguson Township greatly benefits from the plethora of women that reside in the township and will always seek to honor women for admirable contributions to society through large and small measures every day. And the times of undervaluing the role of women in society are no longer. And whereas the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors also fully embraces and enjoys its historic first all-women roster as of 2022, marking the first time in the township's 220-year history this occurrence has taken place and hopes to serve as a testament for power and representation of women in the Center Region. And now, therefore, the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim March 2022 as Women's History Month in Ferguson Township and encourages all residents to reflect, promote and cherish the historical achievements of women across the world, the United States and Center County during this time period, proclaimed this first day of March 2022.
Thank you so much, Hillary. That was lovely. Thank you. I do not believe that I have called for a motion on this. Somebody.
I'll do it.
Great.
I recommend the Board of Supervisors adopt the proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, officially recognizing Women's History Month.
This is Hillary. I'll second it.
Fantastic. All right. Um, let's see, is this a roll call vote? No, this is not a roll call vote. All right, this is a voice vote. All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. All right, and motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. And thank you again, Nick, and thank you, Centris, for getting this on our agenda. All right, and next up, we've got communications to the board. Anything that anyone would care to share with us this evening? Patty?
Um, actually, I don't have a communication to the board. It, it's just a communication from a board member. And I meant to say this earlier when you were asking if we had any questions or comments about staff reports. And I meant to say this earlier when you were asking if we had any questions or comments about staff reports. And I wanted to say thank you, Dave Modrick, um, in reading your report for the extra effort that you put into meeting about the Cherry Lane and Martin Street intersection. So thank you for all that work, um, with SCASD and everybody, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for highlighting that. I also had wanted to highlight that, and I, uh, forgot, uh, in the meeting flow. Really do appreciate that. What a great brainstorming of options, uh, and, and so thank you. I imagine that'll just continue to march forward then, and we'll go ahead and see that 15 mile per hour thing happening. All right, that's great, that's great. Okay, uh, Bill Keough, uh, it looks like you have a communication to the Board you'd like to share.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I really thought maybe this would come up during the Board meeting, and, and, uh, uh, that would save me the airtime, but it didn't happen to. Um, on March 12th, which is a, a week from this Saturday, uh, the Ferguson Township Police Department has partnered with the Baileyville Community Hall, and we are offering on that date a fire safety event for the public. That fire safety event will include, uh, the Alpha Fire Company, and they'll be bringing out, uh, uh, one of the fire trucks. Uh, it'll also include our own police department, who are going to, uh, work with the public, uh, anyone with regard to safety car seat checks and, and installation of, of car seats. Uh, it'll involve, uh, the police department also spending some time with our residents about scams that happen to be going on in the area. And, uh, we have had a couple recent ones, uh, that are making their way through, uh, the area. Uh, and in addition to that, uh, Larry Schwartz from Schwartz Fire and Safety out of Belfont will be present onsite and, uh, will be available for, uh, residents to purchase, uh, uh, fire extinguishers and/or have their existing fire extinguishers evaluated to see if they, uh, meet the standard necessary, uh, for full operation. Um, and, and we're excited about this. This is the first time that, that, that we've ever done it. We're excited about the fact that, that we're partnered with, uh, the Township Police Department in, in doing this activity, and Chief Albright has, has been the main, uh, driving force and leader with us in this particular activity. Uh, I will also say that, uh, the time of the event is from 10 o'clock in the morning until 2 o'clock in the afternoon. And of course, that's over lunch hour, so the, um, Baileyville Community Hall is also providing, uh, for small fee, um, uh, bag lunches for anybody who comes out, and, and, uh, that, the proceeds from that will help, uh, uh, with, uh, our coverage of expenses and costs and operation of the hall. So kudos to Ferguson Township and your police department in partnering with, uh, 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 those of us out in the western end for this fire safety event. Uh, we're real excited about it, and, uh, thank you, that's all.
Thank you so much, Bill. Bill, I will point out that, that did make it into our agenda, but it's the item after this one. So we do have that there in our dates. Um, we are excited about partnering with you, and I'm sure that Nick is gonna be promoting that for us. And Bill, I might just show up there so I can have my fire extinguishers checked and my car seat for my grandbaby, uh, checked out, because those, those devices, they have, uh, really changed since I had my little one, so. Um, I may see you there, um, and thank you for doing that.
And I know, and Nick has already started that process in terms of, of, uh, advertising through the township stuff, and, and, uh, we're relying a lot on social media, uh, to get the word out that we're having this event. Uh, I've been in contact with the Pine Grove Mills Newsletter people and, uh, Ramblewood people through their, uh, Facebook page and so on, so. Uh, we're excited, and, uh, uh, we know that this time of year, weather is always something that you hold your breath over, but we all live in this, this, uh, uh, temperate zone, and, uh, we'll adjust.
Yep, that's right, and we always have Public Works to rely on for our roads, so we're not worried about it at all out here in West Ferguson. Um, all right, thank you so much, Bill, and thank you, everyone. Uh, uh, we'll move on from this, and we've got our calendar items. Uh, looks like the Board will be reconvening on March 8th for our work session, uh, where we'll be, uh, really just receiving information from staff about, uh, our strategic planning process and any feedback they've got, uh, for us thus far. Um, and then we'll be following up with that at the next regular meeting, um, on March 15th then. And, uh, with that, if there's nothing else to highlight, I'd be happy to accept a motion to adjourn.
This is Patty, motion to adjourn.
Fabulous. And fabulous, we'll consider ourselves adjourned. Bye, Steve, thanks for joining us from wherever you are. So good to see you. All right, take care, everyone, good night.